Good evening. I'd like to call the April 25, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. My name is PJ Connolly. I will be presiding over the meeting tonight. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Protem Glover for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll have that little guy sit down first.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and you should call it, and we'll start with that.
No, I do Jermaine's. I don't know if Jermaine brings his class in. I don't know if there's not.
All right, let us pray. Dear Lord, our heaven and Father, we thank you for this day, and Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Greenville. Dear God, make everything that we do be pleasing in the citizen's sight, and Lord bless the council as we have to go through and make decisions and hard decisions, and bless the city staff that keeps us in line. We want to thank everyone for all that they do for the city of Greenville, and Lord, we ask that you continue to pour your blessings upon us as we grow and as we become a city of togetherness. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
And Councilmember Litchfield has let us know he will not be attending. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I am here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, give it to him.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Mayor.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember...
Attorney.
Yeah, Mayor, council, I just asked if a closed session motion be added to the agenda?
I'd like to approve as revised.
To approve as revised.
Second. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay. First speaker is Mr. Cameron Donaldson. Mr. Donaldson, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Counsel, Madam, or Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, I'm here. I'm an employee. It won't be very long. I'm an employee of the City of Greenville Police Department. I'm here in support of Nikki Verden, who's here today. I know y'all are well aware. There's been plenty of social media, plenty of people reached out. I've reached out personally. There's been a issue with, I'm gonna call it an issue, maybe a mistake or something missing of the policy in the City of Greenville where Detective Verden served our city, you know, for 18 years. She was injured in the line of duty. As part of that, she's been required to medically retire. Part of that, or the biggest issue we have is she's now gonna be without her supplement that could be entitled to her by statute, but unfortunately, the city doesn't have any type of policy to do that. So she's been left out to drive, girl, with that. Same thing with insurance. Again, I know y'all well of that. I'm hoping that y'all are working to correct that issue. You know, today, you know, we're having issues with retention in police officers, and I think it can speak volumes if you make a change of that because of this moment. Any officer, unfortunately, hers was just a wreck, but you can imagine a police officer being shot in the line of duty or injured and having to stop working, doing something that they love, and then their back essentially being turned on by the city when that doesn't have to be the case. I'm hoping that you guys consider the, a change in policy or a city ordinance, whatever it requires, so that this doesn't happen again and so that this kind of rallying doesn't have to happen and it can just occur as it should. So, again, I'm hoping that you guys consider some type of change in policy or ordinance so that one Nikki, Detective Verden, can see a change and get what she deserved and has earned it over 18 years, along with making sure this never happens again to another officer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Thank you for your service to our city. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Yes, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Veronica Verden.
Good evening.
I said it earlier, I'm Nikki Verden. I was a detective with Greenville Police Department for 15 and a half years. I've served as a law enforcement officer for over 18. This week is my last week of service because of an incident that occurred March 9th of last year. I was heading home in my patrol car when I was struck head-on by a drunk driver. I was trapped in that car that was burning and couldn't get out due to the injuries that I suffered, and that's the pictures that I brought you guys today. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see them. Please. I don't know who has had a chance to see them, and I know a lot of people have heard about my wreck, but I don't think they understood the impact that it's had on me. When I served this city, I loved each and every person in this city. I loved each and every area in this city, and I try to serve each person that I came across with cases with dignity, compassion, and respect. I came across during my exit with HR that my benefits that I would be entitled to would only be my benefits through the state orbit system. I would not be entitled to unless policies change to my city's supplement, or also known as a separation buyout for law enforcement officers. That statute is 143-166.43. I know you guys are aware of it and have seen it up to this point, but I want you guys to understand the impact that this has on me and my family, as well as my coworkers. Obviously, I didn't set out that day to know that that wreck was gonna occur, but when I started this job at the age of 20, I was sworn in at 20, I knew I wanted to do 30 years minimum. I started this job to be a career cop. I don't wanna hang my badge this week. It's hard. I wanna go back to work with these guys every day, but what I do have to worry about are my two children. So when I started this job, the benefits that were offered to me offered stability in the long run for the two girls that I have. One is 17. She's going to college in one year, and the other is here. She just turned five last week. A lot of the things that you guys don't know about the wreck was, for months, I was bedridden. Months. I couldn't pick my children up physically. I couldn't pick myself up. I had to crawl on my hands and knees up and down the stairs of my home just to make it into my bed. This happened for months. I almost lost my foot. They wanted to amputate it. Looking back, the only insurance that I have or the stability that I have is my state medical disability retirement and then what I'm going through with workers comp. The city didn't have at the time uninsured or uninsured motorist coverage, which could have assisted me greatly in the long run. And that's time.
You can keep going. Go ahead.
So that's left me at this point fighting for stability for my family, and I don't want you guys to feel like I'm fighting you because I know you guys didn't set the policy. But I do know with that statute, the policy can change, and what I'm asking is, don't just look at the policy as a bunch of words on a piece of paper. Look at the policy and how it affects each and every employee that works with this city and what I've had to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Verden. Thank you for your service to our city. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Stephen Hardy-Braz.
Absolute. We're happy to see you not in a wheelchair.
Thank you.
So take your time.
Detective, I don't know you, but I know how lives can be changed by a careless driver. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager. Come to you tonight because with awareness, I think I was raised that comes a responsibility. And as you know, I came before you with, you know, being put in a wheelchair by a careless driver, and that's an ongoing issue. But it gave me greater sensitivity to the people that do have disabilities in this city, including myself, to get around. And we know that in 1990, the federal law, the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed. You know, I have a handout there from the Department of Justice reminding us that whenever a road is repaved or substantially altered, curb cuts and ramps are required to be put in. You also see on the very front page there, the city's own inventory of non-code current sidewalk ramps. The red dots are the issues we have to face and admit, inquire. Thirty-two years in the making is what we've gotten so far, those green dots. We have a lot more to do. These are just the ramps. Never mind the bus stops that are just a stick in the ground with no way to get on there. If I need to get on a steady bus using my wheelchair, I'm forced to stay in the road, as well as other people dodging traffic once again that try to kill us. It's not an issue of maintenance of these sidewalks. That's the city's disability too. That's a whole nother addressing. It's not addressing the crosswalks that are nonexistent. We talked recently about Dickinson Avenue. There are 26 in that DOT project right now. There are 26 official crosswalks there. DOT is gonna add paint to two more. The city already has two that are painted. That still leaves so many things that are unsafe for everybody. So with the awareness that's come with my injuries, I'd like to ask you, what can we do? Can we make more of these red turn green? Now, I understand that some of these are NCDOT streets. They're not your responsibility, but we can pressure them to follow the civil rights of people with disabilities as enshrined in 1990. These are issues that basically, I'm not saying that we're not in compliance, but it's a legal determination by a court, but anyone filing a suit would have to defend, or the city would have to defend why these are not in compliance with a law that's 32 years old. With the recovery act, you have the funding. I can ask you, for each one of these districts, if you'd like to, I'll show you the personal, the ones that are missing, the ones that are not to code. I'm not an engineer. I'm just a person that's trying to get around and be safe. If you'd like to come out in a wheelchair, I will show you each one of your districts and these issues that people every day have to face and have to risk being hit by cars and things. So I'm asking you, if you have the recovery funds and public works, this is their own admission of the needs here, what can we not do better for people in our city? It may be our own city employees. It may be a citizen. It may be somebody else. Maybe one of your own family, maybe yourselves, but we could think and do better. Also, there's an invitation there for the Ride of Silence, the annual ride that we do to increase safety and awareness for cyclists out in our city. I encourage you all to come out. We're gonna do a joint thing with the city this year with a sponsorship, thanks to the mayor, and we're gonna do a shorter ride, a six mile as well as a 12 mile on May 18th, and that'll be in joining with hundreds of communities across the world that same night. I know you want safer streets. You want it for your families. You want it for your neighbors. You want it for yourselves.
And that's time.
Let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy-Braz. Thank you for your advocacy. Our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period may come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Yeah, come on.
Our greetings, Mayor, Madam City Manager and City Council and Staff. Don't have much to say, but I always feel that whenever my students and I kind of bombard city council meetings, I at least owe a beg of pardon. These are my sociology students, so they're just quietly observing and taking notes. But I would be remiss if I didn't also add that, Mr. Detective Verden here, as I wasn't aware that this conversation was going on, but I should add just how amazing of a service-minded officer she has been. She hasn't hid behind rules, policies, badges, or things. She's made herself available to community members. Whenever things, when things were going on in our community, she reached out to everyone involved. I can probably go through text messages and emails coming from her, no matter what was going on in our city, and I think it would be horrible for us to stand behind a policy and not figure out a way to, to support her fully as the way that she supported us. But, uh, thank y'all for having us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McNair. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, counsel. My name is Suzanne Creach. I did not prepare a speech here today, but I don't think anybody in this room could say a more heartfelt speech than what Detective Nikki Verden said to y'all today. Anybody that didn't have a tear in their eyes, probably not human. Nikki Verden dedicated 15 years of service to the community. It was an unfortunate accident, an on-duty accident, that tragically ended her career. She dedicated herself to this community for the 15 years, and I would hate to think that this community or this city is gonna turn its back on her in a time like this. And like she said, it's no fault of anybody up here. It's just a policy that was maybe overlooked or something that needs to be added or revisited. But I plead with y'all, not only for her, which is why I was here to begin with, but after listening to her, I'm here for every Greenville officer that works for the city of Greenville because they could be in that same situation. Please take that into consideration when you're doing your budget. Take that into consideration when you're looking at how we're gonna protect the people who tirelessly protect us every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creach. Anyone, anyone else that'd like to come speak during the public comment period, please come forward, one of the two of you. You're coming. We'll wait for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Christine Cliff. I definitely did not plan to speak tonight because I didn't really want to, but I am here for Nikki, and I've listened to everything tonight about the city budget and the raises and how we're down. I don't even remember how many people, but I think the police department is down 30. Is that what I heard? This policy is part of the reason we can't keep officers in Greenville. This policy is what they look forward to. I hate to say forward to, but when you have officers that work every day and are in danger of being shot and the way the world is today, these officers go out there and don't know what's gonna happen. Nikki, unfortunately, it wasn't an accident. I'm sorry. I learned years ago they're called crashes. This person took her life and almost took Nikki's life. By doing that, she has changed the direction of Nikki's life, which has also changed the direction of her coworkers, who are now having to find somebody to take her place, who will never actually take her place, but will take her seat. What they can never do for the city of Greenville, what Detective Verden did as a police officer and a detective. So please consider the policy in order to try to keep, to keep officers and employees with the city of Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
City council members, manager. I'm here mainly...
Could you state, could you state your name just for the record so that we have it?
My name's Randall Allen Mills, Sr.
Thank you.
I've been in the Greenville area for about seven or eight years now, and I am a disabled vet, and I know the policy changes that the VA goes through year to year to make things accessible for veterans. I wholeheartedly ask that the Greenville City Council make changes to this policy to help this young lady out for all she has given to this city to make sure her kids and her family are taken care of. Because it's people like her, people like me, and the millions of others, that if policies aren't changed and looked after for different individuals in various circumstances, there will be a lot of people left without what they need. And that's why these policies are put into place. I'm just asking, and I'm not asking, I'm begging, for you guys to take a long, hard look at this and make a change where it needs to be made, so that Ms. Verden don't have to worry where her next meal's gonna come from for her family. And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you for your service to our country. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Samantha Carnavale. I'm a police officer here in Greenville. When I first started, my first major crime scene, it was Detective Verden who came out. And I remember that day, I called my mom. I said, "Mom, I know who I wanna be in my career. I wanna be just like Detective Verden." And I've only been here three years, so it hasn't been that long, but even when she's been out, I still think of her when I go to scenes, and she's still the kind of officer I strive to be, whether she puts her badge up this week or however that turns out. She has been my role model since I started. I hope you guys take what she says and our other speakers here tonight to heart and really think about her and where we come from. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Carnavale. Thank you for your service to our city. Anyone else that'd like to come speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Phoebe Mills. I have known Detective Verden for 12 of her 15 years that she has been with the Greenville Police Department. I have been very fortunate that I have never needed her in her capacity as a police officer, but I have been very blessed to see her in action many times. A few years ago, remember when the guy had the umbrella that looked like a weapon for ECU, Barbie 5.0 on newspaper? That was Nikki. I have been very fortunate to see her light up a child's world just by holding him in her patrol car and letting her flip the lights on. I have watched her leave events with her children and her family to jump in her patrol car and go when she was needed and called. I have watched her cry after a bad day. I have heard her on many occasions stress about what she was going to do now when her career's over. I have seen her excited about the potential of people joining the career that she has chosen. I have watched her do her off-duty positions with more joy than anybody could possibly do after having worked her normal shifts. This is something that, as long as I have known her, she has looked forward to retiring from. This is a policy that I'm asking you to think about changing, not only for her, but for every officer that gets up every day and runs towards the danger that we hide from. It's a policy that needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Well, Mr. McNair, you've gotta have a student that wants to stand up. Somebody.
We're gonna be good.
If you give them an A, they might stand up. I see some looks down that way.
They want that in writing first.
All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Thank you, everybody, for coming to speak tonight. We'll move on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next time in this presentation of the FY 22-23 operating budget, and I'm gonna step around to the mic and just start that presentation.
The manager doesn't handle many presentations personally, so...
She wants to come speak during the public comment period? Counsel's okay with us reopening the count? The...
Yes.
If she, if she wasn't cute, we would, we may not consider it. All right. Can you tell us your name?
My name is Audra Price.
Nice to meet you, Audra.
And I love Ms. Nikki because I like to play with her daughter, and she's always gonna be with me.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
She'll be there one day.
I hope so. I hope she will be. I'm gonna close the public comment period again. Counsel's okay with that? All right. Madam Manager, you're up.
Thank you very much, and that was a very tough act to follow. Okay. So, Mayor and council and those that are in the audience tonight, we're here today to talk about the fiscal year 22-23 operating budget. I will start the presentation tonight. I'll talk about the highlights, and I'll quickly turn it over to Byron Hayes, who will provide more detail on the expenditures. Two very quick notes. First of all, this budget presentation, as we have discussed, does not include funding decisions related to the American Rescue Recovery Plan. We will bring those, that spending plan, to the council at your meeting in August. Number two, it's important for me to acknowledge good work. You know, as the council knows, I like to do that all the time, and I want to extend deep appreciation and gratitude to our departments as they pull together the budgets, but most importantly, I'd like to say, thank the staff of financial services, as well as Byron Hayes, for all the hard work that goes into providing this annual budget. Okay, so I'm gonna figure out how this works. So what we wanna do is, we wanna talk about the fiscal year 22-23 annual budget. It's important that we always start at the beginning, and the beginning is the mission of the city of Greenville. The mission's on the screen, high level, talks about high-quality services and an open, inclusive, professional manner, ensuring that the community is a community of excellence now and in the future. It's also important to talk about how we frame this budget, and this budget is framed in the sense of maintaining the direction of the city council. Those items that the city council has acknowledged to us and expressed to us that are important, and the screen talks about those issues. It maintains our progress related to Capitol projects, Wildwood Park, EPS, the new community pool, and maintains your emphasis on pavement management. We'll talk a bit more of that to come, uh, come along, and maintains the work that we're doing with the Stormwater Utility Plan, and maintains our investment in city staff, and our traffic safety initiatives, and maintains our support for economic development and the partnerships, and it maintains our commitment to arts, entertainment, and special projects. Now, we are particularly proud, and the council should be particularly proud of this slide. This slide that shows that our tax rate is as low as it's been in 20 years. We could also have added an additional slide in this to show that it is the lowest tax rate since 1984. I don't think there are many cities in North Carolina that can, can talk about having a tax rate than, that it was lower than in 1984. A lot of that is good work on the city's part, on the council's part, and it's excellent work on behalf of the city staff who continue to deliver exemplary services in a very efficient manner. So, again, we started with the mission. We talk a little bit more about the council goals. These are your goals. I'm not gonna go through them one by one because what I'm going to do in the next several slides is identify the highlights, the budget highlights that support those goals. So let's move forward with that. When we talk about community engagement, safety, and wellness, what we will know is that it provides 200, this budget provides $250,000 for pedestrian safety improvements. We reclassify three positions for fire rescue that will provide additional oversight and training, as well as safety training for our fire department to support our new tiller truck. It also provides for three additional positions in the fire department that will provide additional staffing when we open Fire Station Number Seven, and what that will allow us to do is operate two units at a Fire Station Number Seven versus the one that we originally talked about. This, this budget also provides for the implementation of the master, master police officer rank, and we'll provide a little bit more information for you all as we go along. As it relates to public infrastructure, this budget provides $2.8 million for the pavement management program. This year, you will know that we provided funds for, I don't know, I feel like I'm looking over my shoulder, but... to look it over my shoulder, but can I go on?
Yeah, we're just saying it was hot in here, so...
Oh, it is very warm in here, and I'm dying here. I don't know, you can, like, have a no... Okay, okay. Thank you very much, because I was thinking to myself...
You should come on, and then it...
Yeah, it is very warm. $2.8 million for pavement management. It provides $4.35 million for pay-as-you-go funding, which includes $1.2 million for infrastructure improvements, almost $3 million of general fund dollars for vehicle replacement. We do add an additional position, a traffic control supervisor. That person will be assigned to work with traffic-related issues in the community, street lights, signage, those additional items. We also have included in the Public Works Department, a new facilities technician that will assist with our increased building needs and will put them on air-condition maintenance to ensure that we're working. The budget also includes $600,000 for contracted mowing and landscaping and support of the city's Adopt a Street program. We always want to work to maintain the street right-ofways and our city facilities. We've added, the budget includes an additional position, a network analyst, too, in the IT department, that will really support the traffic safety initiatives, and that would really be the camera system that we have. Additionally, this budget continues the council's approved stormwater utility plan that was adopted in April of 2019, which will fund up to $70 million of stormwater capital improvements, as well as about $46 million of stormwater operating maintenance over 10 years. The plan is funded by an increase in the stormwater utility of $1 per ERU in this current year, in the new year. The budget, we have often talked about proactive economic development. The city, the budget includes $500,000 for citywide economic development initiatives, $17,000 for the Pitt Greenville Chamber of Commerce, and $50,000 for economic development initiatives in the Uptown area to support our partner agencies. As it relates to a thriving and attractive community, the budget includes a custodian position at Wildwood Park that will serve that park, that new 360-acre park that's being well-used, about $91,000 for the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge. You'll see the activities that will be supported in this. About $80,000 for various community events, including Greenville Grooves on Juneteenth, Pirate Fest, Fourth of July, and New Year's Eve celebration. It provides for a 1.5% increase for the Shepherd Memorial Library. We have also added a new classification of employees and sanitation, a sanitation crew leader 3. This position will provide additional promotional opportunities in our sanitation division. As it relates to a high-performing organization, I think I heard it click on, again, this maintains the tax rate at 48.95 cents. This budget includes a 4% average wage increase for our employees. We do have funding in the budget to support the salary or the true-up study that is underway now. We have provided a 1.2% increase in employer-funded retirement, which is a 12.24% rate for law enforcement and an 11.40% for non-law enforcement. And with that, I will turn it up to Mr. Hayes, and he'll provide some additional details.
Just a question real quick before you leave, and maybe this is something that Mr. Hayes or Mr. Cowan might be able to answer. I noticed that you highlighted that we were providing $91,000 of funding for Emerge and the arts, I think. Do we have any idea what we did last year or any of the previous years?
I believe that is the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, and you all, for Mayor and Council, there will be certain contracts of service that the council will approve. One will be for Emerge, one potentially would be for the downtown organization, and there would also be a contract of service for the Greenville ENC Alliance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I will continue the rest of this presentation. So, moving on, looking at all funds for the 2023 proposed budget, we have a total of about $427 million, of which about 35% or $150 million is City Greenville operating funds. Breaking down those operating funds, about $95.2 million, or roughly about 63% of our city operating funds, is represented by the general fund. And looking at the general fund budget, about $88 out of every $100 is tied up in six of our major funding sources, our property tax, sales tax, GC transfer, utilities franchise tax, rescue transport fees, and our power bill funds. So, looking at property tax, we see property tax has grown about 4.4% over the past five years. A lot of that does have to do with revaluation a few years ago, but our total assessed value is currently at about $8.1 billion. And as Manager Walsh stated earlier, our tax rate is 48.95 cents, the lowest it's been since 1984. And you see the look for the past 20 years, very consistent and stable tax rate that we see consistently going down as well. Which, with the tax rate decreasing, but our assessed value growing, we do see a pretty consistent sales, or property tax revenue coming in, average of about somewhere between 3% and 3.5% over the past three to five years. And our current budgeted rate is about 2.96%, so just under 3%, at about $38 million in fiscal year 2023. So, how do we compare with our other peer cities within the state in terms of property tax, looking at population, our tax rate, and revenue? So, benchmarking against these seven cities, you see, just based on population, population for Greenville is right about 93 million, or, excuse me, 93,000 people. I'm used to dealing with bigger numbers, not quite this small.
Not according to the census.
Yeah.
A little less than that.
Yeah, a little bit less than that. But this is what we were looking at a little bit earlier, which puts us a little bit lower than some of these other cities. And our tax rate is right, you know, roughly about in the middle at 48.95 cents. You see a high point at about 65 cents, whereas Wilmington's about 38 cents. So, looking at that combined brings our tax revenue, about $38 million, roughly about where our population rated with all of these cities. A bit lower than some of the top cities, but we clearly aren't the lowest. And that tax revenue brings in about $400 per person, or per citizen, to the city of Greenville every year. You see Asheville brings in about a little over 750, whereas Fayetteville brings in about 300. And as you all know, we always like to look at what a penny brings us. 48.95 cents, one penny is roughly about $777,000 in revenue for the city of Greenville. And so, looking at sales tax, we do see that sales tax has grown very consistently and very greatly over the past five years. Last year, we did have almost 10% growth in our sales tax. However, just due to the volatility and the nature of the economy right now, we are keeping that sales tax projection flat for the 2023 year, at just under $27 million. Looking at expenses, about $2 out of every $3 that we have in the general fund budget is tied to personnel, roughly about $59 million. And breaking down that personnel, the personnel budget, this in 2023 includes a 4% employee wage increase, was talked about in the Pay and Benefits meeting earlier. About $1 million that's been allocated for potential salary increases due to the compensation study that was also talked about, the 1.2% increase in retirement contribution from the city. It also includes a 4% vacancy rate, and it includes the three new fire rescue officers and the three captain reclassifications for the tiller truck operations within fire rescue. And additionally, it includes the master police officer rank within the police department and sanitation crew leader classification within the sanitation division. Looking at those, both of those classifications will begin in the current fiscal year and will affect, the potential reclassification could affect up to 65 police officers and up to 21 sanitation workers. So, looking at our wage increase over the past six, seven years, looking at a 4% increase for the current fiscal year, an average of about 2.23% over the past three years. Keep in mind that fiscal year 2021 did have a mid-year adjustment rather than a beginning of the year adjustment due to our concerns related to COVID. And within the personnel budget, about 68%, almost $40 million is tied to salaries, and about 19 or 32%, 19 million or 32% is tied to benefits. So, within our operating budget, about 73%, almost 3 out of every $4 of the $22 million that we have in operating is tied into our, is allocated for our operational departments and as well as our public safety departments, police engineering, public works, recreation, parks, and fire rescue. So, looking at capital, we have about $1.6 million allocated for capital. And the majority of this $1.6 million is our vehicles, over $35,000 that will be replaced. Our vehicles under $35,000 are replacing our operating dollars. And additional capital that we have allocated is set in our transfer lines, which brings us to our transfers. The general fund does transfer out funding to seven different funds, debt service, facility improvements, engineering capital projects, Shepherd Memorial Library, housing, transit, and public works capital projects. Of the $13.7 million that we have set aside for transfers in the 2023 budget, 3.4 is set aside for our engineering capital projects fund. 2.8 of that is set aside for our pavement management program, and $600,000 is set aside for our build grant match contribution for the current fiscal year, or the future fiscal year. And about $250,000 is set aside for traffic safety initiatives, going to the public work capital project fund. So, looking at our other funds, we'll start with the transit fund. Transit is roughly about $3.5 million proposed in 2023. We previously used in 2022 and the prior year CARES Act funding for our grant income for those years. However, we are back to using our regular 5307 operating funds, which does require a match. So, 80%, or the funding is reimbursed at roughly 80% for any capital expenses and 50% for operating expenses. And the transfer from the general fund this year is roughly about $770,000.
How much was it in 2021? Do you have an idea? Was there a large increase?
So, we did not have a transfer in 2021, I don't believe. In 2020, I think it was around, it was around 750 or so. I can get you that number. It's relatively similar to what it was at that point. But in 2021 and 2022, we were using CARES Act funding. Looking at our debt service fund, our debt service fund did go down about $600,000 from the prior fiscal year. That is just due to the fact that we have not borrowed our build grant match yet. And so, as a result, we transferred that money to the engineering capital projects fund instead, of reserving it for debt service. Looking at our sanitation fund, sanitation's at about $8.4 million for the 2023 proposed budget, and sanitation rate does remain constant in the 2023 budget at $16 a month. And looking at stormwater, stormwater is about $8.6 million. This does include in the 2023 budget, a transfer to the enterprise capital projects fund for additional projects within the watershed master plan. And it also includes an additional dollar increase per ERU to the rate. And just looking at the rates over the course of the past seven years, we do see that it did increase $1 in 2022 and $1 in 2023, so the new rate will be $7.35. Looking at our housing fund, housing is $1.9 million for the 2023 proposed budget. Our housing fund and operations are pretty similar to what they have been in the past. We do still have some CARES Act funding that has been exhausted, but we will have future funding from the ARP, American Rescue Plan, that will be allocated once that, once everything has been vetted and approved by the Housing and Urban Development. Looking at our fleet fund, it has stayed roughly about the same at $5.2 million as it was last year. Obviously, we are still concerned with the impact that inflation is having on some of our fleet charges, particularly our fuel. So, staff is still monitoring that to ensure that we can still be able to meet the needs of the city in terms of our vehicle operations. And looking at our health fund, it is $14.3 million, which is the same as it was last year. We feel pretty confident that, given where claims have been and where rates are kind of going, that we can keep that fund the same as we had it last year. So, as you see, it's $14.3 million. Looking at vehicle replacement, vehicle replacement is up to about $5.2 million, up from about $4.8 last year. And a lot of that just has to do with the, the rate is still set at 50% for all of our vehicles, over $35,000 within the general fund, and 100% for the vehicles outside of the general fund. Facilities improvement, we have $1.2 million allocated to three different departments, our public works, our recreation and parks, and new this year, our information technology department for infrastructure improvements related to technology needs. Which brings us to our summary. As Manager Walsh stated, our, this proposed budget is a strong reflection of the city's missions and goals, and it does continue our commitment to maintaining capital, operations, and personnel within the city. And once again, the total budget is about $427 million, of which 35% or 150 million is made up of the city's operating funds. And breaking that down, again, 63% or $95.2 million is tied up in the general fund within our city operating funds. And just the remaining dates, May 9th. On May 9th, the proposed GC, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Convention and Business Authority will present to the council. That's also the same day that we will publicly display all the balanced budgets. On May 12th will be the public hearing for the 2023 budgets, and May 23rd will be the adoption. Any questions?
Any questions for our city manager, or Mr. Hayes? Or anyone? Couple comments, I would like to say that I think this would be a great opportunity for us to beat Concord.
(laughing)
This is the city manager smiles. And then, second, I think it is great to see that our health, our health fund has remained constant. I know several years ago, we had looked at that, and we were very concerned that that could potentially go the other direction, and for it to be basically exactly the same as last year is a great sign, so good work to everybody.
Right, and Mayor, I think it's important to point out that we have gone three years, three years without a rate increase on the health fund, which is a really...
That's awesome.
It really shows the value of our city clinic, a health clinic, which, as well as the work that the employers are putting into wellness, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Councilmember Bell?
Could you go back to the sales tax projection slide, please?
Thank you for whoever turned the AC on.
You will. Assistant city manager, turn the AC.
Assuming that that rate doesn't level off and it does continue the upward trajectory that we've seen over the years, what would we do with that incremental revenue that we're not budgeting?
So, first of all, as soon as we do see that, and we do, you know, run periodic projections throughout the year in order to try and, you know, determine what that number is going to be, we would look to appropriate that funding. And, yeah, we would, we would obviously do any sort of one-time spending that we could possibly do, one-time capital spending for the fiscal year, maybe things from the CIP that we weren't able to get to.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And I think that's the right move, to be very conservative with that number, based off of what we've seen with the market.
Yeah, we've seen a ton of volatility, and even though, you know, obviously, the past three or four years, we've seen some pretty consistent rate increases. We do, you know, are always a little bit concerned that it could turn the other way, so we do want to be relatively conservative.
Absolutely.
And this is the year to be, to be very conservative.
Absolutely. Every year is a good year. That's it. No other comments? All right, thank you very much. Let Madam Manager get down to her seat. We will now move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you very much. Do you move on for comments for the mayor and the city council? Start down here. Councilmember Meyerhoff.
I normally say no comment, but I want to say thank you and congratulations to somebody that's helped me for a number of years. What you may not know is when you run for city council... What you may not know is when you run for city council, you raise money, and I'm not allowed to manage that money myself. I have a treasurer. Not long ago, a few days ago, my treasurer, Jenna Lindsay, took a trip up to New York with her boyfriend, and her boyfriend proposed to her. So I want to tell my treasurer, thank you very much for being my treasurer for four and a half years, and also congratulations on getting engaged. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Bell?
No comments.
Councilmember Daniels? Wow. Nothing? All right. Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Justice. I always ask the questions about our employees because I'm concerned about our employees and how they're being paid for the work that they do. And so it is not unusual, for those who are here, to the GUC, that was first part with GUC, with the council meeting, I'm going to always ask the hard questions. Because we do have some very loyal, hard-working employees, and we have to do everything we can to maintain these because other cities are taking people away from small cities like us and that we've already trained, and they're ready to work. So they're taking people away from us. I want to say that since this meeting, we will have another meeting. We'll have another meeting in May. My youngest granddaughter, we're graduating from Howard University School of Law on May 8th. And if you miss me in Greenville, I'll be there with her. God bless you all, and everyone have a safe trip back home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The only comments I have, I want to say congratulations to Mount Calvary Church that I attended yesterday. They celebrated their 114th anniversary, which is very, very impressive. And it was awesome to be able to see Mother Jones there, who is 104 years old, and she has been a member of the church for 102 years. How crazy is that? That's unbelievable. So that was a really very special day. I was thankful to be able to participate in it. And congratulations to the entire congregation and Apostle Brown. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session, given by, I believe the language will be by Attorney McGirt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion holding a closed session for the following reasons: pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a1, 3 and 6, to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to law or not a public record, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuits entitled: Eric Stephen Fearington, Craig DeMamrose, plaintiffs versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education defendants; second lawsuit, Mary Sue Vitavas, plaintiff versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education, Phil Berger, in his capacity as president, pro tempore of the Senate; and Tim Moore, in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives, defendants; third lawsuit, Chase Jean Matthews, Jackie Olson, Alexander Pascal, Tiffany Shaw, Mark Owens Jr., Barbara Owens, Matthew Allen, and Jessica Lovender, individually and on behalf of other persons similarly situated plaintiffs versus City of Greenville; Phil Berger, in his capacity as president, pro tempore of the Senate; and Tim Moore, in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives, defendants. That is the suggested motion.
So moved. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 5-0.
We're officially in closed session.